Bienvenidos al podcast que existe para enriquecer e inspirar a jóvenes latinos. Estamos con una súper mega invitada, nada más y nada menos que la Commissioner Alma Naya. Alma, muchas gracias por estar con nosotros.
Muchísimas gracias por la invitación. Luisa, aquí estamos y vamos a tener una buena conversación hoy.
Alma, so we do have listeners from all over the country. And you have a very particular position in Cook County, which is the county where Chicago is. Could you tell us a little bit about that position before we start? What does it mean to be a Cook County Commissioner?
So sure, yeah. So the Cook County is the second largest county in the whole US after LA County. So we serve, you know, 5.2 million people. And yeah, majority, I would say maybe about half is in the city of Chicago and then half is in suburban Cook County. So we have, you know, over 150 municipalities and we serve a lot of people, right? But the majority, the main function, I would say, is our criminal justice system and we have our health system. So we're a safety net, but we're also a place of last resort for a lot of people. So a Cook County Commissioner pretty much makes laws. So we write legislation, we make laws. And then we also have direct services to our constituents. So a lot of people come to us. It's very similar, you know, to what a city council member would do or a state representative. But we're just right in the middle of those two levels, right? We're at the county level. So we are considered a local government, but we do a lot of the direct services. And here in Cook County, my district is in the city of Chicago. I have the highest concentration of Latinos and I also have the highest concentration of immigrants. So I'm excited to serve in that role. I was the youngest woman ever elected and one of the first formally undocumented in the whole country to hold office. So I'm really excited to be able to represent my constituency and the county board.
That's wonderful. Alma, that was a good answer. That was a great answer.
I tried to summarize.
That was great. That was great. Just so people get a good understanding of who you are. Now, you know, a few weeks back, we were talking and you were telling me a little bit of your story and I was like, oh my God, Alma, we need to interview the podcast. You have really an amazing inspiration story. So can you tell us a little bit about your background? You know, you just mentioned that you, I mean, now you are a Cook County Commissioner, you're an elected official. But you also said that you're the first woman and you also were the first who wasn't documented in the past, right? So tell us a little bit about your background.
Yeah, so I am the youngest woman ever elected. And so I'll talk, I'll talk a little bit about just like my background. So I talk a little bit about being undocumented. So, you know, when I was six years old, my parents decided to move to Chicago where my dad had a lot of his family members. So my mom, myself and my brother came to this country undocumented. And we lived in Chicago ever since, in the south side of Chicago. It was quite tough, but I think as a kid, you don't really realize that you're different in that sense, right? And I think when it started hitting me is afterwards, when I was in high school. I think during my teenage years, I went through a lot of struggles, just like many families, many Latino, many undocumented people go through, right? And I think I started really noticing the fact that I couldn't get a license. I had young, you know, after almost graduating high school, I had friends that were becoming election judges and they were doing a lot of things and applying for, you know, scholarships, etc. And it was really difficult for me to do that. So I think, you know, it came also as a culture shock in some sense of not being able to access the same thing that most of my friends. Because at the time, I really didn't have any other friends that were undocumented. So it was quite difficult to just be, you know, the only one. And on top of that, you know, I shared, I share my story often because I know it was very tough for me to share it. I think overcoming not only that part of it, but under, you know, overcoming the fact that, you know, there was domestic violence at home when I was in high school. It was a situation where we often left and then came back. And it was such, you know, instability in the household. Got to see a lot of horrible things, experienced a lot of violence. Later, when my mom decided to leave my father, I was still in high school. We literally picked up at three o'clock in the morning. So it was one of those situations that I vividly have in my, in my brain of like, my mom waking us up and just saying like, you know, agarra tus hermanas la ropa, let's get out of here. And in garbage bags, we pretty much put all of our belongings in a car. And kind of did that for a time. We were living off of car or in motels, having to deal with that aspect of my life, having to deal with the fact that, you know, just we didn't have a support system and it was really just my mom and my siblings and I. And it was, it was tough and it was, it was difficult knowing that I couldn't help my mom, although I was the oldest of four. It was very difficult to understand the fact that like, I just couldn't help in any other way. But, you know, provide, you know, any type of support and reassurance to her. Because there was a lot of times when she was like, okay, should we go, no, we're going to go. And, you know, I was like, no, we're doing the right thing. You know, I think as an older child, again, I repeat, I was the one that got to see more of that aspect of our life and really, really, really turned me into an angry kid, I would say, an angry teenager. Experiencing that in your household and understanding that, that not a lot of people either notice it or maybe don't care about it is quite hard. And I think when you're, you know, coming of age, you think that things are gonna get figured out. Like you're gonna become a teenager and you see everything on TV or you see your friends. And, you know, a lot of the times you don't understand why you're now living a more, a better life, that you're, you're having to hold these struggles. And again, because I was an anger kid, but also a very shy kid, it was very difficult for me to like express myself and really understand how to deal with the emotions, understand how to play a very supportive role for my mother. And of course, just like trying to get through life as a teenager, right? Trying to pass the, you know, SATs, trying to figure out what I was gonna do with my life being undocumented. So I think it really fogged my brain and really, didn't really understand how to, how to deal with it much. So I think I share that often because a lot of young people, you know, they go through the same things. My story is not unique. My story is not, you know, extraordinary in any kind of way, right? I think it's very common, especially in Latino households, where domestic violence or sexual assault is something that, you know, is normalized. And in general, also being undocumented in the Latino community or any other immigrant communities and having to face with the realities of society and things that are, you know, just kind of pushed on you as a kid and you not being able to deal with that. So, you know, thankfully, I was able to really get close to my faith during the time, you know, going into college and really even after college, I shared with you that my big, you know, eye opening and something that really helped heal me was going to a three-day retreat that really helped me deal with those emotions, that trauma that was held on and understanding that forgiveness was the way to go. That forgiveness was important, not for other people, but for myself too. And I think that that was one of the biggest things that really changed my life. And I think my trajectory is understanding that it's all in our hands and it's all in God's hands. And understanding that, you know, if we have that faith, good things will happen and we'll get through it. And it's, it's tough not to say that situations are not tough or that they don't, they won't matter because they do. You know, because of the experiences that I had, it made me who I am. It gave me my perseverance. It gave me my strength. So we always learn from that, but it's important for us to understand that there's always people around us and we just need to make sure that we, you know, we pray up and we are able to gather with people that are supportive and can help you get through a lot of the difficult situations.
Alma, first of all, just thank you so much for sharing. As I, as I listen to you, you know, my, my tears are right there, you know? And, and one of the reasons for me, this is, this is very personal. Well, first of all, I'm a DACA recipient, so I grew up, you know, undocumented too. But also your story is the story of the, of the young people we work with here in East Cali, right? A lot of them grew up experiencing domestic violence at home. And that's very unfortunate because domestic violence is a huge issue in our communities. And we don't talk about it much. And also the, I don't think there is any good initiatives to really, you know, address the issue. And then the other part that I hear is, you know, you were homeless, living in a car with your, with your, you know, the four of you and your mother. What I hear you saying is resilience, right? The incredible resilience that you had, that you have, that young people have is often, the often results of suffering at home with domestic violence, of being homeless, of experiencing all those hardships when you're a teenager are not necessarily the outcomes that I'm, that I'm seeing here, right? Yeah, you had, you went to a retreat, you're in a process of healing and, you know, perdonar, but you know, a lot of our young people, you know, they find refuge and sometimes in gangs, right? Where they find a sense of family or people that are not violent towards them, but violent towards another group. They also find refuge in addictions, right? The drug addiction in our community is, is big. And it's hard, it's hard to talk about this because it's our community, you know? You, you said something that is very powerful. It's unfortunate that your story is not the only story of struggling and suffering in our community. We have a lot of work to do in our community. We have a lot to, and we need to do it ourselves, right? I think you also said that as a Commissioner now, you know, embracing and acknowledging your own path of suffering and also acknowledging that that's the path that, you know, maybe people, people listening to us are listening and saying, you know, my father is violent, you know? Not every mother, not every woman has the courage to leave, sometimes the aggressor. As a Cook County Commissioner now that went through all of that, I'm sure that gives you perspective, right? And then the other part that I, that I hear is God is working within you, right? God is, God is present in your life. God, you know, through faith, you had a moment of healing. How does that, how does that influence the Alma of today? An Alma that lives in a, in a county where we have experienced a lot of violence, in a county that you say that your district has the most Latinos. A lot of the Latinos in your district have very similar stories than you, both men and women. There is a lot of hope and beauty in our community, but yet there is also a lot of work. What is your approach to service? Now, we don't have to talk about policy, but what is it that you hope to achieve as, you know, as a public servant? You know, because just first of all, I think you can inspire a lot of people just with your own story. But what, what, what is your approach to service as a public servant? You know, taking in consideration your, your, your life, your own testimony.
Yeah, so I think, I think it's, it's different in many ways, right? I think, you know, I am the only Latina on the Cook County Board. So in a county that has, you know, 5.2 million people and a third of it being Latino, I'm, I'm the only Latina, again, having the immigrant perspective, the undocumented perspective and understanding the violence that exists. Because I did grow up in the southeast side of Chicago. So I did get to see a lot of, you know, the gangs and got to see a lot of disinvestment. So I think that that perspective brings, brings a lot. So I'll talk a little bit about that first and then I'll go into like the formation of Alma and how I do policy and what really drives me on that end. You know, I think, you know, I talk a little bit about the fact that we had to leave home and, you know, experience a lot of hardship during the time. And I think the, one of the reasons why I became so, I think, angry at the time and didn't really understand was because I was like, why is nobody able to help my mother? Like I thought about it and even as a teenager, I'm like, okay, we live in the US. Like we literally left to Mexico to, to be in the US because we were supposed to have a better life. I didn't realize how, I guess, isolated we were because yes, we lived here and my dad's family is here. But we, there was no real support system for my mom in the sense of like social services, right? Like the fact that there was no non-for-profit organizations that were able to help us out during the time. And, and it was, it was, I would even say, it was even difficult even through the archdiocese, when my mom did approach the archdiocese. And it was very, at the time, very difficult. You had to be on a waitlist, etc. So I, so I think that what, what that really taught me is that the resources need to come to our communities. And if the resources, if the funding, if the, the programs and all social service in a very holistic way doesn't come to the people that need it the most, then that's when you see that disconnect. And I think, you know, you talked about, you know, maybe potentially women not being able to have the courage. And a lot of the times it is the case, but a lot of the times is their immigration status, right? It is the, the fact that there's no resources. Maybe there's not a Mujeres Latinas en Acción in the area or any other, you know, wonderful organization.
They don't know.
Or they don't know, right? Or they don't speak their language. And I think during the time, I often reflect that the fact that like my mom was starting a legalization process with my father and how that was difficult for her also to just like abandon an application for immigration status and having to start from scratch, right? So, I mean, the fact that for a long time, my father was the breadwinner, right? And not, and my mom having to, you know, figure out how to, you know, work. And the idea of having four children, four children by herself is very difficult. So I think it's still shocking, but we need to talk about it more, that there's still so much domestic violence and that that violence oftentimes does translate into street violence. And I think that there's often a disconnect with that. There's no, you know, I've had, I've had this conversation even in my field with people telling them like, do you know that domestic violence and the trauma that that causes actually does affect street violence, right? I think that, and oftentimes people don't see them. So I really bring that perspective forward and I try to really analyze it. Just like I've analyzed my life and I've analyzed what has happened to me and really dissected, you know, could there have been other things that, other support systems or anything else that could have maybe helped out the situation? I try to do that as well in my workforce. So I mean, the first year I was, I was in office, I was, you know, I'm very passionate about what you talked about. Young people trying to figure out what are the alternatives for young people? Because I see myself reflected in my district, right? So in the first year, you know, we pushed to eradicate a database that was criminalizing Latino and Black youth. Not because there's not violence in our Black and Brown communities, but because there should be an alternative to just saying, you're a gang, you're Brown, you're a gang member, you're Black, you're a gang member. There needs to be real, real reform in the way that we treat this type of violence, right? If, if the solution is just classifying people as criminals, just very much like, you know, certain presidents have done automatically, just saying, oh, these people are bad. It speaks volumes also to, to who we are as people and what we believe as human rights and social justice, which are our teachings of, of our faith, right? I mean, Jesus was pushing for social justice. He knew that you couldn't even classify a person of, you know, a woman of the streets and say that that person was not worth it. I mean, at this point, it speaks volumes to who we are as individuals and it speaks volumes to our religion and our faith. So I think that, you know, I often push for that. I often push for, for, for making sure that we need to invest in that. Why we've been, you know, increasing funding for violence prevention grants for young people, right? Why I was able to put in funding for programming for domestic violence and sexual assault survivors, right? I mean, we need to invest in that. It's not enough just to classify people. We need to make sure that we're doing something about it. Because if we don't address that, then we're not addressing the root issue. So I think that, that, that's how I interpret it and that's how I bring my voice forward into the, into the Cook County Board of Commissioners to, to make sure that, that we're talking about those things and that we're connecting the dots. Because oftentimes we, we want to solve an issue so bad that we're not really willing to dissect it and understand that the root cause is oftentimes the fact that there's no resources, that there's violence, that, that people have been experienced and that there is no, and of course, that there's trauma, but that there's no healing to that trauma, that there's no real investment in that healing and no resources that, that have actually gone to that community. When you really look at the map of Cook County or Chicago and you really overlay violence, health disparities, education disparities, when you, when you look at, you know, just all of that, right? Resources and the lack of resources, it overlays in the same neighborhoods. It can be a coincidence. It cannot be a coincidence. So I think when, when we, when we look at the data, when we look at what our community is facing, we need to have that lens and we need to be able to talk about that lens. And I started talking a little bit about, you know, how faith comes into this, right? And the formation of it. I believe in healing, right? I believe that if we are able to heal, we should try to heal others. And I think when I'm in this position of government, it gives me a platform to be able to heal a lot of people in a lot of different ways. Whether it's through the small things that I've mentioned, right? Violence prevention grants, whether it's through providing resources for survivors, whether it's through making sure that we have language access in our health and hospital system so that people understand what their doctor is saying to them or getting vaccinations in Latino communities or getting, all of that stuff is part of healing and, and it's part of improving a person's quality of life. And I think that, that, that that's something that I benefited from. You know, it's something that I've been very passionate about and I've gotten involved a lot even when I was younger and growing up. And like I said, I went through my struggles, but then I really was like, okay, I can't sit here and just yell, porque Dios, porque, right? It's like at the end of the day, you're, you're put challenges to be able to handle them and, and be able to move on and figure out what you can do with that. So transmitting that and really turning it into a positive is something we have as individuals. And I, I try to carry that forward within the work that I do as an elected official.
Thank you. Alma, talking a little bit about, about your life. What are, what are some of the sources of hope in your own life?
That's a loaded question.
What inspires you?
Yeah, you know, I think the constituents inspire me. My family inspires me. So, you know, we're, we're a very close-knit family, me and my immediate family. And we're there for each other and the good and the bad. And I would say obviously that they're my biggest inspiration. I mean, I did grow up as like a second mother to my siblings, right? I'm the oldest and I would do anything for them. And of course, my mother, who's so strong and has done everything for me and even my father. Because we've, we've done healing, we've, we've worked on things and we've been, you know, he's come to me and he's apologized and he's, you know, we're on the process of understanding how to move forward. And that keeps me going too. I mean, he has, a lot of, of him are parts of the systems that I'm trying to help. So that if there was, you know, if he was living as a constituent of mine, that I would be able to help him. And if he was young, if I was an elected official when he was younger and resources were there for him and support systems and behavioral health support systems were there, then it wouldn't be there. So I think I see it as a vice versa. So I would say my family and of course, my constituents. It's, it's heartbreaking to see the disparities. It's heartbreaking to see the hurt, the trauma. But when you get that smile, when something goes right, when you're able to do something that impacts them, it, it is quite life-changing. And getting to even during the pandemic, I mean, being able to provide resources, being able to serve. In six months, we served 31,000 people, which is unheard of for such a small office that we have. And, and we were able to do so much, right? Whether it was through census work, census outreach work, whether it was through food distributions, whether it was through vaccine distributions or PP distributions, any of that. Like being able to see a family, you know, tell me that they wouldn't have gotten fed if they didn't receive the box we gave them is extremely life-changing and that keeps me going.
That's beautiful. And thank you also for sharing the, the healing and forgiving process with your father. It's beautiful, right? None of us are perfect and I have made mistakes in my life and it's hard to apologize, right? But it's beautiful that you also shared, yeah, he apologized and we are working things out. I think we all have those situations in our families, right? You know, we work in, drinks out at the end of the day, you know, that we are a family. So that's, that's also beautiful to hear. Alma, you know, most of the people that listen to us are young people. As you look back at your 19-year-old, 20-year-old Alma, what would you tell her?
Well, first I would give her a big old hug. I think, I think young people feel alone oftentimes. There's a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of hurt. There's a lot of, a lot of things that our young folks deal with. Especially in a city like Chicago that is very segregated, but there's a lot of violence. There's again, not enough resources, a lot of disconnect there. But I think, you know, it's important to, to know that, you know, yeah, you'll get through it and, and it's, it's difficult now, but the courage that you need to look for, the, the strength that you need to look for is within you and it's already been given to you since birth. So, you know, just fight through it and really get, get through the situation. And then I would also, I think I would prepare myself for helping others. Because I think, you know, my mom was so like, okay, vas a ayudar en la iglesia, vas a hacer esto. You know, she was, she was always there to tell me I was gonna do that. But I think as young people, we don't really realize that, you know, a 19-year-old can help and mentor a 15-year-old. A 15-year-old can help and mentor a 12-year-old. I think oftentimes we see ourselves as like, I'm just trying to get through what I gotta get through and, or feel so hopeless that they don't really look around and really see that other people really do need them and that they, that they are a sense of inspiration. Every day we live, every breath we take is more than we, we have, right? So we need to figure out like, how did we get here? What were our survival skills? And what, what specifically can we give? What have we learned to be able to give others? And really help people out. And I think that that's something that we need to carry that forward. And I think as a young person, I didn't think about that. I was so worried about, you know, my immediate family, but didn't, you know, my mom was the one that would push me into doing, doing other things. And, you know, oftentimes we limit ourselves and we, we don't see how, you know, our potential. But, but definitely I would say that. And of course, I preach healing all the time. So I would just say like preparing for healing and what healing looks like for a person. And it's different for me than I'm sure it would be for you and healing for another person is completely different. So understanding and really looking at ourselves and really understanding, you know? I did a graduation and I told the young people there, I was like, make sure that you oftentimes look in the mirror. I'm like, not only for vanity purposes, maybe, right? But, but also like really looking in and seeing like, are we okay? Sometimes, you know, with social media, like our lives, we try to portray that it's just so perfect, but we have like hurt, right? We have trauma. And really looking in the mirror in that sense of like, am I okay? Do I need something? Like what is it that I need, right? Not, not just, you know, covering over with superficial things, but really understanding our, our inner self. And I think as young people, we often oversee that. So I would say, you know, making sure that, that, that is treated. Because as we become adults, we need to make sure that we're in a good playing field to be able to handle adult situations, right? And hurting and hurting and having trauma and not dealing with that is, is very difficult to continue on with, with the other things that is expected of you as, as a grown-up.
Yeah. Alma, as, as you know, faith and, and community are a big part of what we do here in East Cali. We believe that faith and community have a lot of power to bring healing and also help people sometimes make better decisions in their, in their own lives when they, they are young. What do you think is the role that faith and community has played in your own formation?
Yeah, so, you know, I was I was that kid that was always involved with the church, right? So my my godmother that unfortunately passed away last year, um, really taught me that. She, I mean, we used to, you know, help make flautas for the quermes. Uh, we used to get involved with Vaisles Florcorticos for like all the 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 church events, but but my mom also, right? So, I mean, I was an altar server growing up. I really wanted to be an altar server. I thought they were just like the coolest. Um, so I, you know, growing up, I did that and, you know, obviously became a CCD teacher. I helped um form one of the youth groups um at one of my churches a few years back. So, um, I think, you know, faith has played a really big role because it has taught me so much. It has, um, not only was it uh one of the 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 places of escape, right, for me, um, in 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 forming like my public service um aspect of myself, um, but it really just did help um me really understand that I could do something about it, right? That I that there was something in me that that can change, um, whether what I was going through myself or what others around me were going through and and me helping out. And obviously, I, you know, I talk about the retreat, my godmother was the one that invited me to the retreat and, you know, I um, I think it really helped me in on on a lot of aspects, because uh it it really is able to, you know, the the church is able to um help you understand what are we here to do, what is our mission, right? And I think oftentimes we get, again, get clouded with with society and everything that they tell us that we need to be, we need to do. Um, but really, I I think it really helped me during during some of the most difficult times where I didn't know where to turn, where I didn't know who to talk to, how to deal with the situation. Um, and I've just been very blessed to have a lot of people around me that really instilled in me, um, eh not religion, but faith, right? Like, I think, um, obviously, religion as well, being being Mexicanos, right? Like, I think that that's part of our 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 cul- culture to some extent and in our day-to-day, but just like faith and and really getting through a lot of the the difficult situations and being thankful and appreciative in the good and in the bad, right? Um, so I think, you know, it's been a really big part of my life, um, and I think that that's why I have um a lot of faith and I have a lot of um hope for for the world, right? Because I I I ultimately think that if we all want what's best for everybody, if we are pushing for social justice, uh, and that is the root of of our work, whether, you know, you're an elected official, whether you're a teacher, whether you're, you know, uh, anybody else, if if that is the root mission of you as an individual, then we we will be all right, the world will be all right. Um, so I think, um, I would say that. Sorry, I was a long-winded.
No, 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 no. That's great. Um, Alma, what what is next for you as as you look in the next and the next few years? I mean, uh, you have a very powerful story. You are also, uh, you have a lot of work. I mean, serving thirty thousand people, you said, in six months?
Three hundred, yeah, yeah, thirty-one thousand, yeah, in six months.
That's that's uh, that's a lot of people. Um, what what, and you you were just talking about like your mission and life and how the church and faith has kind of given you like, I would say, a purpose. Um, what do you see yourself doing then and then in the next few years?
You know, I'm not sure. So I I have my reelection coming up for for Commissioner, so I I've been doing this for about three years, right? In two thousand and eighteen, I became a Cook County Commissioner, so, um, I would say definitely my reelection, I I still feel like I have a lot uh to to work on, right? At the county level, there's still a lot of room for improvement, um, and I'm excited to do that, but um beyond that, I'm not, I'm not quite sure. I think, you know, I, when I became a Commissioner, it wasn't like something that I was looking at, looking for, right? My background is in communication and anthropology and I, you know, did Spanish and some other stuff in undergrad, so was never really to become an elected official. I think, um, I was, you know, I started working in government and really saw passion and I really knew that my intentions were very pure in helping out my my the constituents and the voters and, you know, it it kind of was something that, you know, I was asked to do and 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 or I I was asked if I would consider it and I, you know, I think that, um, I never saw myself in the position, but I I do believe in um faith and I believe in in destiny for for a person and honestly, um, it was the best decision to run for office because I I know that I'm making a difference and I know that, um, it's something that I'm very passionate about and I really love doing. Um, so it's not like I'm looking for another position or anything else to to do that, but I I I firmly believe that um faith will will put me where I need to be, God will put me where I need to be and and I'll be there, I'll be his servant, so I'll continue to do the work that I need to do.
That's great. Thank you for for all the work. Well, to finalize, thank you so much for this conversation. I mean, I'm inspired and I know that uh people that are will listen to this podcast will be inspired by your story, by your passion of service, by your passion of building the kingdom. Um, it's it's beautiful to see, you know, public servants with that fire of service and really like a genuine passion for making a difference is is beautiful. So may God and our Lady Walupé bless you and uh and and your all. Um, but what would you like to say to the young people that are listening to us that might be struggling finding a career path, that might be struggling with maybe even an addiction, that might be even struggling to connect with God, to connect to faith? Um, you know, you you've been through a lot, you know, you've been through a lot in your life. Uh, what what would you tell the young people out there that are, you know, the the future of our of our community?
Um, I would, I guess my final um thing that I would leave with people is is to always find the best version of yourself. And I've heard that often, um, you know, the best, what is the best version? And I think we won't, I I think that we can only picture what the best version of ourselves is, but um it's important for for anybody struggling, right? Anybody first in, obviously, in a career path, like, I think, you know, finding out, again, understanding what do you really like, what is your passion, what is something that can put you in a place where you'll be able to serve others um and help other other people? And I think, again, because of society, we get caught up with like, oh, who makes more money or like what, you know, a career path will will put me in this path to success. But I think success can be so superficial and it could be um sometimes really fake because there's some of the most richest people in the world are not happy. So, um, uh, I think, you know, understanding the happiness, um, and I think with, you know, addiction, with any of the ills that other of our young people have dealing with, I think we need to realize that that stuff doesn't either make you happy or make you, I I would say, like, a bad person. I think oftentimes people are just stigmatized and just said like, okay, well, you're bad all automatically, and it doesn't mean you're bad. I think if anything, you need to know that you have that power within you to be able to make part of what that version you want to be like, right? And what that version of yourself, that better, best version, um, is like, and it sometimes it takes small steps. I, you know, it's not like, for me, obviously, when I mentioned that I became a very like violent and bad kid, like, not in the sense where I was like being bad, you know, against, you know, my mom or anything, but I think, you know, little small steps, you know, little small steps will get you to your best version of yourself. And it's very difficult. I know a lot of our young people are going through a lot and it it may seem like the end is nowhere near or the light at the end of the tunnel is not there. Um, and sometimes it may feel like you're getting, you know, God's picking on you or something and nothing goes your way, but um understanding that every day is a new challenge and every day is something that you can definitely tackle um and take, you know, bite-sized off uh out of the situation and that can really put you in a better position. Um, you know, I wish that I, you know, could go and, you know, give everybody struggling a big ol' hug and and a direct solution. And sometimes those solutions, I I wouldn't even be able to provide them because I think each person has their own struggles and has their own way of dealing with things and it's not always one size fits all. Um, it's it's about us really internalizing and understanding what is the best version and how do I get there and how do I take those steps to becoming better and really getting through the situations that we're facing.
Yeah. Alma, muchísimas gracias por estar con nosotros. Gracias por acompañarnos, compartir tu historia, tu visión. Uh, gracias a todos los que nos están escuchando. Por favor, si la historia de Alma los los ha inspirado, compartan con los de- con los demás. Y gracias por por siempre escucharnos. Recuerden seguirnos por ahí en social media y gracias por tenernos en su preferencia.
Muchísimas gracias, Vicente. Thank you, everyone.
No olviden seguirnos en Instagram y en Facebook en Iscali Podcast.
Don't forget to follow us on Instagram and Facebook at Iscali Podcast.
Listen with us and experience the joy of the gospel.
Escúchanos y experimenta la alegría del evangelio. Te esperamos.
Dare to dream.
Atrévete a soñar.